I'd like to call the study session of the University City Council jointly with the L S B D to order on September 23rd, 2019 at 6:33. We do have a couple of things that probably are not going to be on the agenda. I believe the folks that are being sworn in are not, neither will be in town tonight. But do any other members of council have any changes to the council's agenda? Hearing none, I will move forward and turn over the program to City Manager Rose.
Here, thank you. Tonight, my role is going to be as facilitator. It is trying to get a bit understanding about the Loop operations and how might the city assist with those operations. Certainly, there have been some changes that have occurred over the past probably eighteen months. One of those changes may have resulted in at least the administrative work, some of that not falling through the cracks a little bit. So, there are two critical questions that I would start out talking about. One is, what are the expectations for our Loop Special Business District? And this is probably the best form for developing those expectations so that you can work collectively. So, once the expectations are set, the other is, how? How do we achieve those expectations? And so, I've taken the liberty of at least outlining probably a no brainer for everyone, that being that you must comply with our codes. So, the what is complying with city codes? The, what does that mean? At least, it means providing us a strategic plan to the mayor and council in the creation of that for the Loop Special Business District. It means the creation of the annual report. It also means creating or recommending an operating budget. The meetings must be consistent with the laws governing acts, so both state statute and our codes. Also, the posting of minutes, some of those administrative functions that the Loop Special Business District does as a wise-like government operation, those are the things that you must do in order to comply, certainly agendas as well. So, anything else on that that, before I do it, I want to make sure at least getting everything with the complying with our codes, anything else that sticks out to you? So, how do we comply? How does the Loop Special Business District comply with at least the codes that it must operate under? One is whether the city can provide it with some assistance, at least on a temporary basis. And if so, then what would that assistance look like? It seems that we could provide assistance with legal, we could provide assistance with finance, and we can also provide some administrative support. And that means dealing with the agendas, minutes, posting of the agendas. So, does that make sense to everyone? At least from an administrative perspective? And I'm assuming that that assistance is needed?
I would like to know, this is Joe Edwards, Chair of the L S B D. Where have we not supplied agendas, minutes, and posting in appropriate legal time?
Well, one of the discussions that we had is that in the past, you had a board member that was over that function. And if the board is still going to be responsible for that, that's one of the items that we could pull back on. But I do believe that it's appropriate for perhaps our city clerk should be involved, perhaps to ensure that you're meeting all of the legal standards, that you must, so that our city attorney be involved in that process. There has been some question about where the meetings fully comply with the letter of the law. But I'm just throwing out, you know, kind of assistance that I believe that the city could provide because this is something that you must comply with.
I'm just saying, I don't know where we did not comply with it. There's some things that we needed to pick up the pace on, which we're working on. But those three particular items, I'm, they've always, we've, in all the years, we've always posted agendas within a 24-hour time period. The minutes are there, they're voted on each month. So, anyway, I'll drop it at that, but I don't think we have done anything.
Let me just ask kind of a basic question. And that being, who is the keeper of your records? So, if someone asks for a sunshine request, who does that go to? And you know, it's kind of rhetorical, but I'm saying those are the issues that we have identified that there are some weaknesses with the L S B D operation. Because when a sunshine request was made, that didn't seem very fluid as far as getting that information back in a timely manner.
And that's a reasonable reply, such different than those three items.
Well, that, well, we may agree to disagree slightly because I think that they are all in some ways connected. But for my specific purpose for here, it's really just focusing on, is this assistance that you believe as a board that is needed? If not, we'll simply move forward without providing assistance too.
I think it'd be great to have a keeper of records connected with City Hall. I think that would be very helpful.
So, one of the areas is legal assistance. Does that make sense? Assistance would be provided in any area? Assistance with finance? Does that make sense?
Well, we've hired an accounting firm that should bring everything back up to standards, and they are actually, we're kind of working, they are working with City Hall to confirm everything for the past 12 months. So, I think that's being done right now. Legal is always welcome, and finance is welcome too. But I think we solved that by hiring the accounting firm, and they're working with U City Finance Department to solve it. We're kind of waiting on U City for their final questions or answers rather than some of the questions to put in the final annual report.
When we talk about finance, we look at it, at least I am, from two different perspectives. One is, are we able to reconcile on a monthly basis the revenues and expenditures, for example? The other is, does the expenditures in particular have all of the backup documentation that's needed, should an audit be required? And that's the area that I think that we've identified some weaknesses. And that's why I say I think that we could provide assistance with the financing area.
Assistance would be welcomed. Every year, there's a dollar amount in the budget for U City's audit, and they've never found anything wrong that I'm aware of. And I don't know what the last audit ended up being, but I think it was fine. But yeah, we welcome that.
So, the other area is administrative support, and we can discuss that at a different time as far as what type of support you believe is appropriate. So, what else is it that the Loop Special Business District should be achieving? What is it that we think are the objectives for the L S B D? What are the things? Well, this gets us back to, what else? So, once we get past the, just the technical part of how you should operate as a, as a government operation, still, what should we, what is the expectation of the L S B D?
Let me preface it by saying that I think we all want to see the Loop succeed. And the L S B D is that governing or guiding body that helps make that happen. So, from my perspective, aside from complying with codes and everything else, I'd like to see them, I'd like to see a buzz about the Loop. And, and that typically came about because there were events, a street-type of events, things that drove, drove people to the Loop, even if they hadn't necessarily intended to go shopping or eating, they were going for the fun because St. Louis loves a party. So, so events would be one. From my perspective, I would like to see some administrative things done in compliance so that the annual report is done, so that the comprehensive plan is first made and then updated. And, and then any of the other kinds of things that need to be done with, with regard to a treasurer's report. And so, whether that's, you know, that's given by the treasurer or not, I mean, something that's substantive and not just, we have so much in the bank. So, that's kind of never the way I've, I've seen it done. So, I, so I think that, just a little bit of history, and Joe knows this as well. University City has long, long invested in the Loop, giving both money for infrastructure and, as well as lately for events and things like that. So, a good portion of our E D R S T goes to the Loop. So, it's, we, we haven't set on our hands with regard to making the Loop succeed. I think that, I think that we, we need to focus on whatever caused this to happen, whether it was the recession followed by the construction followed by whatever else it is, we need to bring it back up and stop making excuses and, and get the buzz going again. That's my ideas.
So, advanced financial reports are your expectations?
Yes.
Good evening. Two other main points that I often think about, at least when participating as a member of the board, is safe streets, security, making sure that people who work in the Loop or are guests who come into the Loop, you know, feel safe and comfortable on the streets at all times. Also, segueing into the events, I think a conceptualized marketing plan would be incredibly beneficial, something that targets a schedule of events amongst other things that helps create or recreate or reemphasize the identity piece which the Loop could benefit from.
Thank you. I want to follow Mike's setup about the marketing plan. I'd like to see a comprehensive marketing plan done to compare the Loop to areas throughout the metropolitan St. Louis area, see what are the pros are and the cons are, what, what the perceptions are of the Loop so that we can have a, a strategic plan that can say in five or 10 years where we're going to be with the Loop in terms of events, having spaces rented in the area and having, we have, seem to have a lot of vacancies along Delmar, maybe in Onlock, but there are some vacancies that are noticeable, and when people drive down to Delmar, they notice those as well. And I've heard that from other people, that it seems to be more vacancies than there has been in the past. But a comprehensive marketing plan that can help us move in that direction. I also, I'd also like to see a full-time executive director or someone administrator that can work in the University City Delmar Loop portion to be able to put on these events and to do marketing once a comprehensive marketing plan has been done. I know that we have a part-time executive director. I think that that position needs to be full-time and with clarification on exactly what that person's responsibilities are.
Once we list all of what are your expectations of the L S B D, then we'll get into the how. How can we accomplish each of these things that you consider to be important? So, any additional items to add?
Possibly a more timely vote in the future on the E D R S T funding for the Loop so that long-term, bigger projects can be planned ahead of time. So, I, I know the last two years, it's been that way understandably, but in the future, it'd be great to have the council pass that, that part of the budget in late June so that long-term, you know, bigger time events could be planned more confidently.
So, one of the E D R S T funding, I think that's going to be connected to the how. How do we achieve maybe the events? How do we achieve the financial reports and so forth? I think you're probably certainly understood by, by the council.
Okay. So, with regard to this year, because your books were not let straight and very difficult to read, that's been the cause of the problem. With regard to the E D R S T, there was some reconciling. So, it's, it's, I'm not going to say it's not our fault, but it is, I think both partners have to be timely about it, and there have been some problems, Joe.
And I appreciate you saying both partners because we still don't have the reports from the Finance Department of U City to resolve.
We can't make heads or tails, from what I understand, out of what has been given to them, Joe.
We'll let the accounting firms talk about that.
Actually, the accounting firms aren't, not able to do that. I mean, if you want to, if you want to do that here, I'd like to make sure that we get through Mr. Rose's meeting, but I'd be happy to discuss it in public.
Yeah, I think once we get to the financial, kind of what is the expectation for the financial reporting? How often do you want, you as a council, want the L S B to provide you with financial information? So, I'd like to start out with how, and rather just talk about additionally to events. What's the number of events that's desired? And then what are the type of events that are desired? Because one of the things I think that we should be, that you as a council, and I'm certain that you as a L S B D board, want clear understanding, clear expectations. And I think the more that we can drill down with some of this, the better it is for our team. So, when we're talking about events, any particular number? And are these major or not?
I personally would like maybe something quarterly. They don't all have to be huge. I think what we do, I think, and I, I knew, so I've just been here a year, and, but I found that the events that were planned, and for me, I thought they were well-planned. I did very successful, had a lot of business, a lot of people coming down. And what I found helpful was the spots on Fox Two and, and the media really helped promote the businesses. And what I really liked, we do, I have an art gallery, so we, we get a lot of out-of-town visitors down there, as everybody does in the Loop. But what I really liked was if there were people from the area that were coming down and saying, well, I didn't know you were here, and I haven't been down in a long time. And they were pleasantly surprised at how nice the Loop was, the trolley. And so, I, I think that if we could work on, maybe something quarterly, like I said, they don't all have to be major, but something quarterly.
So, I think the events kind of conceptualizes all the problems that you have on board on that wall over there because it touches almost every one of those points. I think for many, many years, we have wanted more events, whether, you know, four is always a good number, but you have to go to two, three before you get to four. You know, right now, the Ice Carnival has been a drive for fantastic event, well-organized. It is a preeminent time of the year for the Loop, and it displays the Loop in a wonderful light. I think the desire for many members of the board would be to do more events, but we don't do, we don't do those because, one, we don't ever know what our budget's going to be. We don't know, we have the ability to fund two, three, or four. We don't have really a set marketing campaign set up to promote those events if we did those events. And just as importantly, you know, we're, we're, we're a bunch of volunteers. We are all running our own businesses and working on our own businesses. We all care about the street, we have a passion for the street, but we need help. You know, we can't, you know, we can't do it ourselves. I mean, we do need help, but you know, I know, I'm happy to sit here, I hope I can contribute in some minor way, but I think that the, the center point for me has been for, for many years, and it is, you know, how do we execute that? And the backdrop to that, not only is financial, people, power, but security, you know, I mean, if we're going to do an event, who's going to pay for the security and all that stuff? So, all those things, getting to those events means that, the conversation that you have brought us here today to begin means we're going to have to knock off a few of those points. You know, because if we don't knock off those points, we're going to be saying four events for a long, long time and not getting there. I think we can get there, and I think this is a good first step to get there.
So, we, we're talking about four events. Is that reasonable in this world? So, if we're going to do four events, one was mentioned, the Ice Carnival, does that make sense? What other type of events should we have?
I think fine-tuning the taste of the Loop type of event, similar to the old events that we used to have that kind of went by the wayside, it would be possibly a probably best next major event to fine-tune. There, there are so many smaller ones that, like Wendy said, get publicity for us all the time. And if, hopefully, all of you get the Loop newsletter and the Loop in the news, and I would challenge you to find any other neighborhood in the whole metropolitan area that gets the kind of publicity that all these not-so-big, small events garnish, whether it's a Walk of Fame induction ceremony, whether it's, you know, the Loop Arts Fest and all, and all the events that the executive director that we just hired a year ago, that Loop is planning like holidays, and Loop visits with Santa, great gift on, pictures with pups, moonrise, Christmas tree lighting, it says clients and celebration, that's all coming up, and we'll do those again. All these outreach programs that are being done right now, the Afterglow that just happened this weekend, even though they canceled the balloon race for, why I don't know, no wind. But anyway, that's their decision. The Afterglow event, they get looped every, every week, the Halloween scavenger hunt and all, to get people in the stores. The new executive director has planned a lot has planned, and executed a lot of really good events, like Wendy was alluding to, that not just get people on the street walking up and down, but they actually go in the stores to get their prize or take their photograph and check off a list. There's so many things like that that are going on. I think we should keep those going, and then plan that eventually, it'd be great to have four, but that takes years and tons of time.
Yeah, I believe that there, there are two issues when you talk about events. One is, you know, is it a major event or is it a very minor event? A major event consisting of something that's going to take probably a lot of lead time to plan, maybe a musical event where you have bands and so forth. But I think a major event, I think about the Loop in Motion event that Sean used to coordinate in. Are we talking about those types of events? Were we talking about the four events?
Yeah, I think Loop in Motion combined with a Taste of the Loop might be the next big one that we could work on. And, and hopefully, people will still remember all the events individual businesses put on, on their own, a gallery opening night and so-and-so, and a musical event that happens anyway. The Loop benefits greatly from those not coordinated with the Loop in general, but that's beneficial.
So, two that we talked about at least thus far, one is the Ice Carnival, the other is Taste of the Loop. I'd also say.
Loop in Motion.
Loop in Motion.
Yeah. If it's okay, I'll just add on to what Joe was saying. There's no question that there are events that are happening in the Loop. And I guess for some, to some extent, the success of the Ice Carnival is a backdrop to see, you know, what the Loop is capable of doing. And so, even though these, these events that are happening on the Loop, I think there is a sense that we, if we could, we would like to create another seminar event. And, you know, for me, Loop in Motion seemed to be the natural, the natural next event. Again, as I said earlier, before you get to four, you got to get to two. So, you know, Loop in Motion, you know, we kicked it around and thought about that would be a nice fall event, you know, once summer's over because the Loop, you know, naturally is busy during the summer. But that was, that was one that was, that has been proven successful for many years.
I think all of us are interested in a thriving Loop Special Business District. And so, I believe that part of what's driving this is simply the fact that at one time, let's just say the L S, the Loop businesses generated, and this is just one, 20% of the sales taxes, and now that is 17%. So, one of the issues is how do we, how do we make it thrive? How do we bring it back? How do we ensure that we are bringing people to the Loop, perhaps that have been there before and said, gee, I'm, I gotta go back now? How can we change that around? Events is one part, another part that we talk about is making sure that it's safe as, as we know. So, three of them, Ice Carnival, Taste of the Loop, Loop in Motion.
Maybe combined.
Well, so, I see a distinction between an event and a promotion. And what I've seen a lot of lately, like Get Looped, is more of a promotion, somebody, each business is saying, you know, we'll, we'll give you a special deal if you come in. So, I might come in for somebody's great drink and not for somebody else's taco or something like that. And events are something that are just happening in the area, and gee, while I'm here, maybe I'll get something to eat, why don't I just walk down the street and see what else is there? So, they really bring a different kind of crowd, and I think that, that the bigger Loops maybe bring families, you know, which is something that we want, you know, we want families to come. So, we once had a fair in the square. What happened to that?
All the churches that supported that over the years have kind of dissipated. It was held mainly near the old post office, the current post office, just off of Delmar. And it wasn't a great event. It brought in like 30,000 people at its peak, and it kind of just went by the wayside. It's, it's hard to keep them up, and it was at a time where other neighborhoods didn't, didn't have events. We were lucky at that, at those time periods. But there are other events, like coming up, the Tiffany's is going to show the 75th anniversary of Meet Me in St. Louis. Margaret O'Brien is going to come. She's 82 years old. She was seven years old when she got the miniature Academy Award for that. Those kinds of things are, like you're speaking of, where it brings people in, families in, and they'll go to other places. And I can come just to see that. That's an example of how all the businesses individually do certain things, small at times, but they, they all.
And I agree, Joe, but you have to buy a ticket, yeah, you have to buy a ticket for those things. You have to buy a ticket for the pageant. What I'm talking about is an event that actually just brings people in and reintroduces them to the Loop.
What do you suggest?
Yeah. So, no, I mean, I just, you know, I asked about fair in the square. I just wanted to differentiate between the promotions. I mean, for instance, Dan Wald is going to be having an event and, in which it's a, it's a sale, antique sale or something like that. So, I know everybody does individual things. That's not the problem. The problem is to get people thinking that, gee, the Loop is such a fun place, and they're having another event, we want to go down there. I mean, St. Louis really does love a party. And so, you, you know, we just need to reintroduce people to the Loop and, and make it a destination for them, not just, I'm going to go to a concert, or I'm going to go to a movie, or I'm going to go out to dinner. We want, we want it once every so many times a year. I'm going to the Loop for this, this party.
All ideas are welcome.
So, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to, Joe, the smaller events.
Use the microphone, Steve. The city clerk was having a little bit of difficulty with folks not using the microphone.
Yeah, the, the smaller events, how are they underwritten? They're underwritten with Earth's funding and with L S B D money? Do we have an idea what their aggregate cost is?
I'm, I'm sure the treasurer could say it. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah. So, if the issue, and I, I sense some resistance because of the effort that's required and the lack of funding, if the funding becomes. If the funding becomes available, that's not an issue anymore, is it? They have a bigger event, and I see you combining, um, two events.
Just suggesting, if, if for better chance of success, combining the food with the Loop in Motion, that's a, that's a, I'm happy to have them separate, I'm just suggesting, that's all.
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, potentially, you could simply say, we're going to have this, uh, twice a year. Or, I, I think that what, what I sense is that they're really looking for events that would be comparable to the Arts Fest, I think that Clayton just recently, recently had.
If you give us that kind of budget, we'll put on ten art fests.
I believe that the idea is something that really brings people, uh, back to the Loop and, uh, and re-energizes them. So, let me, let me just move on before I start moving on.
May I ask one quick question? Um, how was Chalk the Loop received? Because I always kind of felt like that was kind of fun.
I, I don't know the answer to it, it's, it's a fair, fairly narrow event. Usually just down one sidewalk, and some people that do chalk come in for it, and the rest kind of walk by and, and smile about it. I'm, I think it's fine, but I don't know that it's a big draw.
Right, okay. So, one of the things that I've noticed over the years, uh, as far as events go, uh, for them to be successful, they need a champion, uh, to support them. Uh, Joe does a ton of work for the Ice Carnival. Without Joe committing his personal time, there would be no Ice Carnival. Um, Chalk the Loop was done by another local person who, um, made it successful, but he was unable to continue his effort. So, once that effort kind of diminished, the Chalk the Loop kind of fizzled out a little bit. So, you know, it's part of the process here, uh, that I think is so important, that, that, you know, we all want events. You know, we, we all wanna do them. And I think there is enough talent and effort on the street to do them. But what, what we don't have is that narrow-minded focus and a budget that will allow us to continue it. And one more important thing is that if we decide to do it, this can't be just, hey, we're gonna do Loop in Motion this year. It's gotta be, Loop in Motion is gonna be for several years. So we can create an identity piece, much like the Ice Carnival has done over the years.
And what Michael said about security earlier is possibly the biggest reason for somewhat slower sales in this part of the Loop because of those broken windows after the stock diverted. And that's hard to overcome, then it takes several years, sometimes five or six years. Every decade, there's always been something in the Loop that has been disastrous, with its tons of kids coming in, you know, over the last, you know, decade. That's been pretty much solved by the Shell Station construction going on, which is not in U-City, but it benefits U-City big time for security. And to get that safety thing out, like this is one of the greatest, the safest city streets in the Midwest, somehow to get that message out to the media and, and the public.
That's, I wasn't sure if I was gonna jump in in the right time on your order here, but that's, I wanted to come back to what Joe just talked about, that Mike brought up first, which is, I think, for me, there are two, two issues that I think need to be addressed, and that's the optics and the perception, that the Loop is inaccessible, it's difficult to park, and that it's not safe. And I think both of those are perceptions and unfounded. Um, I'm, I'm actually quite certain I'll be going there tonight and have no problem parking and feel perfectly safe.
So, I'm gonna finish up with this, uh, subject I talked about, a major event. So, when we talk about financial reports, what's the, how often do you as a council want to see financial reports? And how often can you as a Loop Special Business District generate financial reports?
At a, at a fairly recent Loop SBD meeting, the board voted to require the accounting firm to give quarterly reports and send them not only to the board members, but to, uh, and everybody at City Hall, and if any council member that would like to get them automatically, um, that'd be fine also. So, that, that's what was voted on and doable, I think. Monthly ones, I'm open to it, it just, it'll cost more, and I don't know how accurate they'd be. Usually with a rolling figure, it's, you get more accurate, more accurate feel what's going on. So the quarterly ones, what we voted on and are willing to do.
One of the issues that, uh, has emerged just through us going through this process of trying to reconcile the L S B D books is making sure that we have the backup documentation that's needed, so the invoices. One of the things that we are finding we can do is that we can look at the bank accounts, we can see what the expenditures were, what the checks were. But where we see a weakness has more to do with the invoices being attached. So, one of the issues that I raised was the city providing assistance perhaps in this area. And maybe that, um, in working with the, uh, the accounting company that the L S B D recently hired. But would there be any resistance or concerns about having the L S B D's expenditures go through our process at the city? Such as, you know, I, I talked with our director, oh, there he is, Keith, today, and asked, you know, what would be that impact if we ended up, uh, taking over or providing assistance with your financial reporting, uh, as well as processing expenditures? And he believes this would be pretty minimal. So, if it's something that you are receptive to, I think that's something that we can easily integrate into our system, if that makes sense.
Personally speaking, I think it's worth helping, getting help from everybody, including-
Sure.
If you could save us some money and put more money on the street, you know, businesses would be discussing.
It would only be an animal charge.
So, uh, so this year, I'm assuming if we look at man hours or woman hours, or however you wanna put that, just trying to reconcile the books has taken a great deal of time. And so I, I think that if we can maintain the books and balance them and not have to go through this process, it will cost us less, and certainly then the L S B D will know exactly what they have, what the revenues are, and what the expenditures are. And I think, uh, if anybody took a look at the books, um, it was, it was pretty amazing. Ask Tom about this, or no, no, uh, reasons for the expenditure, or just, I mean, it, it wasn't understandable to me. I've done bookkeeping, so it just wasn't understandable to me. And, uh, and I know that our finance department spent a long time on that. So, I'd like to reduce our, uh, time spent on trying to reconcile something. So I think it would be a good, uh, a good thing to make sure that, you know, that we're offering this service at a, at a very minimal.
I believe that that also will expedite the release of the books, because it's tied in the sense that we can't release the books to you until we reconcile your prior year's records. So, I think it'll be very helpful from, from that perspective, that, that it'll open up your ability to spend money more. Any other issues on, on financial reports? So quarterly reports, uh, and expenditures going through the state system. So, before I get into safe streets, because that's really where it could be more of a public safety issue, I'd like to skip that and talk about the marketing. Marketing plan, self-policy, whether how. So, the marketing plan, should that be separated and apart from the strategic plan? Are we talking about two different things, or is it something that can be tied to the strategic plan?
I think the strategic plan gives you a, a look ahead. And, uh, your marketing plan should then be tailored to your strategic plan, unless for some reason you decided that your strategic plan no longer fits what you want to do. So, um, uh, but the marketing itself is, you know, how you're going to get the word out. Um, and, um, and even addressing some of those things that are uncomfortable, making sure that you have the first foot in before somebody else does. So I think, I think there's several, you know, several layers of marketing plan, but I think, I think fundamentally, you need to know where you're going and what you want.
As far as this strategic plan, I sent out RFPs to, I think, six, maybe seven, uh, different firms with a deadline, return deadline of the twenty-fifth of this month, with us getting back to them after we discussed it as a board and shared it with you, um, October something, anyway. So there, there's time, but that, so that part is underway right now.
So, anything else on the marketing plan? So, we're just talking about for this purpose. How's, how's it going to be financed, right? And who's going to coordinate? And so, I want to talk a little bit about coordination. So, for the key areas that we discussed, Justin, I, uh, events, strategic plan, the marketing study, uh, and the financial reports. Who's going to accomplish that? How do we get that accomplished?
It would seem to be that, um, we need some third-party help, and there's a cost associated with it. Um, that doesn't mean that we're, um, delegating responsibility to a third-party to lead us to something like that. It's still about the board, um, and should about the city, and, um, funding for it, um, could come from a variety of places. The most likely, um, it might be Earth's funding, and, um, it seems to me, um, a, I, I don't know what kind of money we've allocated for, um, a strategic plan, but, um, I don't know how robust it's gonna be, it's very small. And driven by the need to check the box, um, and sort of handicapped by the, the pricing. I don't know that we're gonna get something, um, that, um, offers, um, anything really profound. Um, and, um, I, uh, combining the two or having them done separately, but I think they ought to be done in a way, um, that produces something meaningful, um, that either supports some of the ideas that, um, we're sharing with one another tonight, or expands on those. And so, it's a significant one.
So, two, two, I'm gonna state, there's two options that come up. One is higher than, or, or a, the other is what I come to the Pusey, I have raised earlier, which is having it easy. And let me state that how you deal with these issues may vary, uh, because we're really talking about temporary, um, and how do you deal with it on a temporary basis, and how do you deal with it on a permanent basis, like with us? So I think that initially, it's, these are some things that I sense there's a desire to move forward with. So, so, okay. So, with that in mind, uh, I think we're likely looking at initially at least, on a temporary basis. Putting a structure in that's going to move, because once the, uh, proposals have, have been, someone's going to need to go through those proposals and do their due diligence and make a recommendation to the health.
So, Mr. Rose, could you explain how the, um, the strategic plan is going to be paid for? Because I don't think many people understand, we did put it in our budget, but-
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, the strategic plan is, I wanna say fifteen thousand, twenty fifteen thousand, twenty five thousand dollars that has been allocated out of the fund that we want, Loop Special Business District.
And that fund balance was about a hundred and fifty, two hundred?
Closer to, I think, a hundred and fifty is, is what we believe the fund balance is.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about, um, I guess current community resources. Understanding it sounds like more is needed, but, um, can you, can you, or perhaps, sir, would say a couple of words about the current staffing configuration? I'm seeing, um, there is an executive director allocated a portion of time to what we call the West Loop. Just say a little about that person's capacity.
The, the structure that's in place today is that third-party. Uh, and what the L S B D has done is created an MOU with the West, sorry, with the East, um, Community Improvement Districts, the E C I V. The E C I V has an executive director. Uh, they contracted with the East for certain services that that executive director would perform for the West, uh, for the Loop Special Business District. So that's the structure that's in place today. Uh, and I don't have that MOU with me, but can easily share it with you. It's very clear as to what responsibilities, duties that it initializes.
And so, I'm, I'm, well, perhaps I should not assume it's like financial reporting events. Were those a part of that, or not part of the responsibilities or not?
I believe that, um, I don't go about financial reporting. Events, I believe, are, are an event, um, but perhaps not events, maybe like the Ice Carnival, but not the number of events that's being proposed now, or the, uh, complexity in, uh, creating these types of things. So, much more, much, a very different definition for this than I think that was proposed in, Joe.
Yeah, in, in a real nutshell, it's, um, about a third of the salary of the person who's the executive director of the East Loop CID, um, is paid for by the West Loop SBD. And out of that, two-thirds in the East Loop CID, a third of it matches up directly with the West Loop as far as marketing, events, uh, sure, or something like that. As far as administrative, that's, that's what's not part of her, uh, pay for, you know, her, her requirements for the West Loop. Um, that's all done still voluntarily by us, and hopefully with Hope Room City Hall and the financial part and all, that'll, that'll add a lot. But so it's, it's very equal, and she's gone out of her way to balance it out. So it's, it's very equal, and she's gone out of her way to balance it out. Loop Arts Fest, the meetings are half in the city, half in U-City, meetings at regional arts, Regions Bank rather, as far as small business seminars and all, or help at Regions Bank in U-City. So she's gone out of her way to make sure it's balanced that way. So it's, but no administrative parts.
I think I've got about two minutes, but go ahead.
I, I now understand the third-party help, I was sort of thinking it was a group that can help work with Joe and Michael and somebody like Dan Paul, the guys that have been working the street for a while, and this individual who's working on events now. But it would be worth to develop a vision thing, a plan. And I see the person we have now as somebody who can jump in, make, you know, make recommendations like Joe would or Michael would. But I see her more as somebody who would implement the plan. And I think we might benefit from some visionary, younger people, okay, who are in the marketing world. We could introduce some new ideas. Check on, I'm sorry, Loop in Motion, is that the right thing? Is, is a fair the right thing? Get some input that way, develop our marketing plan. And the director, the marketing director is somebody who implements this, who works to make these events, whatever they turn out to be, a success. So, that, that was sort of how I saw and why we needed some money for this, over and above who the director is, it's for a plan.
If I could do twenty seconds, the, the goal at one time, and still is, I think, with most directors, or board directors, is to not only have the executive director, but a deputy director who would work full-time too, under that person and together with that person so that, for both, the whole of the whole Dunlop, so that year-round, there's always someone in town, whether it's thickness or vacation or something, knows what's going on, has a grasp of everything, can do all the other things that go along with interviews and all that, and work, work together in a unified way and have one Loop Director and not two Loop Directors, all that kind of thing. So that, that was the hope, anyway.
Yeah, one of, one of the things, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on, that Loop Special Business District does not have an executive director. Is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
So what, what they do...
Legally, that's correct, but she is doing everything for both parts on marketing and...
Yeah, I, I understand from a practical sense, what you do, the structure you have in place is that it's more of a third-party where you contracted with the East CID for services. So, I think, you know, we're going to have to end it pleasantly, but I think that we're pretty close. What I'm hearing, at least for this, is that you believe all of these things are recorded. A third-party is perhaps the most reasonable approach for getting this accomplished, at least on a short-term basis. That you're, I just want to summarize it, but that you're looking for fresh people, or you're comfortable with the arrangement that exists with the MOU are. How do you call it?
Okay, so, so from, from my perspective, I, I believe you've asked Ms. Lequay to consider doing some other things. And she's going to run that by the East Loop. But we are not, we, we share, we share a street, but we are two separate governing entities. And, and we should collaborate and coordinate, but we should also, since we have very different needs, you have infill needs, we don't have infill needs. I mean, they're just, you know, just going on, this is my perspective. I'd like to see an executive director. I don't know, I don't know that the temporary doesn't become the permanent at some point. I know that we're, we're looking at, at, at a CID as well, but what if that doesn't happen? And, and right now, what we have is the LSBD, and we weren't planning on, on getting done a bit of that because we liked the fact that businesses had some kind of an input, you know, even if they didn't own property. So, you know, so again, you know, I, you know, I'd like to see an executive director. We have too many things that are not done. If you push it all off on the city, that's, that's not fair either, because the city doesn't have that necessarily kind of talent to do some of these things, and, and shouldn't be, yeah, and shouldn't be doing that.
Yes, I, I wanted to be clear as to what all the city would like. Legal, financial assistance, some administrative support, but for these things, I think that that's going to be individual. It's going to be higher than the others. I think we're going to have, we're good. So, I'm hearing that third-party, there's still questions regarding what that third-party should look like, but certainly on a permanent basis, there's a desire to have some executive director. Is that accurate? Yes? Okay. We are...
The session will now be adjourned and will move to open session. Thank you for coming.